Please, if we could take our seats. Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have, we're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Rekia Wright of the Emanuel Light of the World International Church in College Park. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand with me. And before the pastor comes, let us have a moment of silence for Chuck Ware, who was an advocate for our seniors, as well as somebody who truly believed in the right to vote. So if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you, Pastor.
Pastor, will you please tell everybody about your church and where you are, where you're located and everything?
Okay, yes, my husband and I, we both pastor at Emanuel Light of the World Church in Riverdale, Georgia, right near North Clayton High School. And so we've been there for about 24 years, and I'm grateful to be here today. Would you please join me in prayer? Father God, we just come before you today, God, just giving you praise, glory, and honor, Father, for this day. Father, we thank you, Lord, because this is a day that you have made, so we will rejoice and be glad in it, Father. Father, we just thank you, Lord, for each and every leader represented here today. Father, we thank you that your word says to pray for those who have leadership over us. And so, Father, we just lift up each and every leader here today, God, and we just pray, Father, that you would release wisdom, that you would release strength, Lord God, to each and every one of them. Father, we just thank you right now, God, that you say in your word, "Lord God, if any man lacks wisdom, to ask for it," and that you would give it to them graciously. So, Father, we just thank you for graciously releasing your wisdom. God, that they may be able to make decisions and do the work that you have called them to. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for the harmony and the peace, Lord God, that is within them. We thank you, Father, that even in the midst of disagreements, God, that there is a harmony and a unity, Lord God, in this room. Father, we thank you, Lord, for just the call upon their lives. We thank you, Father, that you're giving them peace, Lord God, in this time. Father, in assurance, God, that you have called them to this great work. And, Father, even the agenda that's set forth before them today, God, we ask that you would lead and guide and instruct them in this time. We pray, Father, that you would be glorified and magnified in this time, God. And, Father, we just thank you, Lord, that you are giving them just soundness of mind, Lord God, that they would not lean into their own understanding, but in all of their ways, that they would acknowledge you, that you might direct them. Father, that every decision that is made, Lord God, that it would benefit the lives of the people who live here in Clayton County. Father, we give you praise, glory, and honor in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening to everyone, and welcome to the May 15, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes. Just a minute, please. Okay, under the consent agreement, I mean, consent agenda, I'm sorry, I would like to hold F for RFP 1802. And under 11, the request from Human Resources, I would like to hold all three items.
Is there a motion?
So... That's my motion.
Hold on a second. Give us one more time for...
Okay. F? Okay, and number 11. Packet from...
Yeah, I'll...
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
So I will remain on the agenda.
That has to do with the compensation study?
Let me ask you this.
Which one?
Well, yeah, let me explain, right, yes, especially under Human Resources. Remember, we still have a compensation study out there and all, and I would like to hold until after we get that compensation study and make the decision on those increases.
Well, I spoke to an elected official, and it's imperative that he get someone in place now. And there is a great disparity, where I spoke to both of the elected officials, and they have articulated a position to me that would warrant us at least listening to them, hearing what they got to say, and then making a decision based on the information they posed to us.
How much money are we spending on that study? We're spending $90,000 on the study? Yes, that's why I would like to hold that until we get the study done, and then we can make a sound decision regarding those positions.
Well, the vote's already been taken, so...
Mr. Chair, if I may add, though, several months ago, it was put forth to this board for us to hold several things, and based upon that study. And back then, we moved forward to go ahead and move forward with those changes in various positions. So I do agree with Commissioner Hambrick that we should rely on the study, but at the same token, I think that, and these positions, just as the ones in the past have stated, it is of a critical state that we go ahead and put someone in place. And that was the same argument that was stated several months ago, when we previously gave the DA everything she asked for, as well as the judge and other folks.
And under F, I have several questions regarding that agreement. With the RFP 1802.
Okay, well, their motion was to...
It was to hold that, too.
So if you would like to...
Pull it.
Take it separate, or, because you wanted to hold the three together. So do you want to make another motion, just to take, leave the F out separately?
I can, yes.
Feel free.
Okay, I move that we hold F under 18, RFP 1802.
Is there a second?
Actually, the motion would be to remove F from the consent agenda to discuss it separately.
No discussion, I want to hold it for more information.
She wants to table it.
I just want to take it off.
Okay, my, misunderstanding.
Okay. So the motion is to table F, RFP-18-02.
Correct.
There's zero second.
A second.
All right, any other discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
Are there any further amendments?
All right, here none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Four, three, one, I'm sorry.
The board has three proclamations to present this evening. The first proclamation, Clayton County observes May 2018 as National Water Safety Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. Mr. Troy Hodges, Parks and Recreation, any other staff members, please come forward as the commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation.
And as everyone is coming up, I just am busting with pride, so I have to make the announcement about our kids at Jonesboro High School's mock trial team. Brought home fourth place in the world, mock trial team.
Mr. Chair, I think their coaches are here, too.
Are they?
I believe their coaches are here, Mr. Chair. There's a coach here.
Stand up and get your accolades, lady. Let's give Solicitor General Fossey-Moggie a round of applause. Her and I believe Judge Katie Powell's also sits on that.
And now the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County observes May 2018 as National Water Safety Month. Whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities play in physical and mental health by enhancing the overall quality of life for individuals. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners understands the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing recreation water-related injuries. And whereas, the Parks and Recreation Department adheres to the standards set forth by the recreational water industry as represented by the National Recreation and Park Association, NRPA, the Association of Pool and Spa Professionals, and the World Water Park Association. These standards focus on developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, and related activities, providing healthy places to recreate growth and development, self-esteem building, confidence and a sense of self-worth, all contributing to the quality of life in our community. And whereas, the Parks and Recreation Department recognizes the ongoing efforts and commitment to educating the public on pool and water safety issues and initiatives. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners understands the importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to Clayton County families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as National Water Safety Month in Clayton County, Georgia. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 15th day of May in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And the next proclamation. Clayton County recognizes May 2018 in support of National Drug Court Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. Now the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County recognizes May 2018 in support of National Drug Court Month. Whereas, the Clayton Judicial Circuit has enrolled 178 participants into the Adult Felony Drug Court Program, with 61 graduating since commencing November 2009, and enrolled 722 participants, with 288 graduating from the DUI Drug Court Program since commencing February 2007. And whereas, there are now more than 3,000 treatment courts nationwide, with the adult drug courts being by far the most prevalent model. And whereas, adult drug court studies show courts reduce recidivism and are an alternative to incarceration. The adult drug court's primary purpose is to reduce crime by changing defendants' substance abuse behavior. People struggling with drugs and/or alcohol have a chronic disease that reduces their ability to control their behavior. And whereas, the Clayton Judicial Circuit continually strives to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, and annual state and national conferences. And whereas, the Clayton Judicial Circuit assumes the critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Clayton County, and deterring future criminal behavior. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare the month of May as National Drug Court Month, and encourages all residents of Clayton County to support and recognize the commitment and work of the Adult Drug Court and the DUI Drug Court Teams. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 15th day of May in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And the final proclamation for this evening. Clayton County observes May 2018 as Older Americans' Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. We have Senior Services Director Tori Strauter Tanks. As well as staff and volunteers, please come forward. And now the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County observes May 2018 as Older Americans' Month. Whereas, Clayton County includes a community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions to our nation. And whereas, Clayton County Senior Services recognizes that older adults are trailblazers, advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas, Clayton County Senior Services is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas, we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities. And whereas, our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. And whereas, each year, Clayton County Senior Services Department sponsors an annual MayFest event, which is the largest celebration in metro Atlanta, with over 1,200 seniors in attendance, and honors Older Americans' Month. This year's theme is "Engage at Every Age", and encourages seniors to redefine aging in our community, promote home and community-based services that support independent living, encourage older adults to speak up for themselves and others, and provide opportunities for older adults to share their experiences. The purpose of MayFest is to honor Clayton County's senior population and recognize how much they are loved, celebrated, and appreciated. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Older Americans' Month in Clayton County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 15th day of May in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
We will have two presentations, two presentations on behalf of a Taste of Clayton Arts Music and Food Festival. The first is a check presentation from FYI Events to Lovejoy High School in support of the arts program. This is a request of Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. I'm gonna take both. And as well as Riverdale High School. Please come forward.
All right. Yes, I get to have the microphone at the meeting for a second. So I'm gonna break protocol as your commissioner. I just have one thing I need to do. Birds flying high, you know how I feel. Sun in the sky, you know how I feel. Breeze drifting on by, you know how I feel. It's a new dawn, it's a new day, it's a new life for us, and I'm feeling good. Now, real quick, it's not gonna take but a second. That's the reason I did that, it had nothing to do with me. The reason I had these gentlemen come up here today is because you don't know the history between the two. This is Mr. Nelson Render, Lovejoy High School principal, and the principal of the world-famous Lovejoy Girls Basketball Team. But what you do not know is that he also is an award-winning musician, and I have some folks out there who know that as well. He has played all over. Also, to my left is Mr. Michael Plough, who was his section leader down at the FAMU. And he has the award-winning Riverdale Jazz Band. Y'all, come on, life's too short, yeah, celebrate. So before I give them the chance, I would like for, I saw Marlon Altobelli out there. I also saw a couple of other people that helped sponsor Taste of Clayton. Come on down for this picture, because this would not be, would not happen without you. Come on down, yes? And I saw someone else. Where's Deborah? Deborah, come on! Hey, like, you talking to me? The reason I did that is because one of the things I always say, I was born in Georgia, but at the end of the day, I was raised in Miami. Why do I keep saying and I never forget Miami? I love Georgia to my heart, but it was Miami that nourished me, that always sold into my life, always made sure I had an opportunity and a platform to be able to share what I felt God gave me, which was to be able to share songs. Now, I say that because these folks travel and they play all around Clayton County. So as of this day moving forward, if you all perform, you need to make sure that you sow into these programs. You sow into these programs so they can continue to be great and continue to do great. And so I thank you all for performing at the Atlanta Jazz Festival, 31 Days of Jazz. I have a check for you, sir, and your program, on behalf of FYI Events and the event. And actually, we have two for Riverdale Jazz Band, because they also performed at our reception for our builders and developers. And because you all made such an impression on that group, we have been able to continue and forge a relationship with the Atlanta Home Builders Association. They have come to meet with us in Clayton County. We are working with them, and they're knowing more of Clayton County and seeing us in a different light. And the reason y'all are here is because we couldn't do it without your support. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I wanted this on record. Make sure you sow back into our schools and into our students. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, and the board will now consider the consent agenda with the exclusion of item F.
All right, there's no motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item F. Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's properly moved to second. Any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
Chuck Reed, Legal Department, I'm sorry. Pamela Amblis, HR.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Human Resources has three requests for your consideration. The first one, on behalf of the Police Department, Human Resources is requesting to transfer of four vacant police officer positions to the Office of the District Attorney. The purpose of this request is to support the implementation of a joint human trafficking and anti-drug force, task force. This task force will be located at Hartford-Jackson Airport. The second request, on behalf of the Office of the Tax Commissioner.
No, take them each separately, please.
Take each separate, okay.
Okay, is there a motion on this? Is there a motion? Alright, fails due to lack of motion.
The second request, on behalf of the Office of the Tax Commissioner, we have two deputy tax commissioner classifications within that office. We've discovered a lack of parity in these positions. We're requesting to increase the deputy tax commissioner from grade twenty-one, step one, which is forty-two thousand sixty-six dollars, total compensation fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, to grade twenty-four, step one, forty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, total compensation sixty-eight thousand eight dollars. A review of the job description does indicate that they, that these two positions have similar compensable factors. This request does result in an eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two budgetary impact.
Alright, is there a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Well, there is a concern. And my concern is that we have, uh, we are waiting on the study, the compensation study, to find out about the amount of money that other areas have for these same positions. And I would like, since we have, we are spending ninety thousand dollars on a study, that we wait until the study is over and then make these changes.
Commissioner Bascom, could you come forward? And I'm just gonna add to that, there's been other positions that we asked for to hold because of the study and we passed anyway. So this should be given on due consideration as well. Mr. Bascom, can you explain to us the vital importance and need of the position that you're requesting?
Uh, definitely. Good evening Commissioners.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner.
Want to take the opportunity to help you understand that this position, once it was vacated through retirement back in March, it was vacated to the point where we discovered that the parity was totally off. I already have a deputy tax commissioner over motor vehicle that makes that amount. Now I have a vacant position, third in command of this operation. And when you say, and I do understand what you're coming from as far as the study, but my problem is now that position is vital to my operation. Number two, if it stays on the field, you say, well, wait until afterwards. After what? That's the question. Number three is basically, I, along with my chief deputy and others, are separated from this position and that we have to fill ourselves. So it is, as far as the criticality of this position, it's needed now. Number two, and number four, if you understand one thing about my operation, it's about to take a total transformation completely as of July first. One, on the property tax side, Tyler Technology comes in. And we have to be prepared for that, you know, through training, software, hardware, you name it. On my tax side, drives is a new, uh, new system that the state is mandating that my office will be prepared for. Test driving is definitely is September thirtieth. So the bottom line is very vital that somebody is in that position at this very moment to definitely prepare for the changes that's coming ahead.
Uh, Commissioner, I understand what you're saying. How long has this, uh, person been retired?
Since March, uh, twenty-third.
Okay.
This year.
And, um, when will the study be completed? Is that a month from now?
June.
June.
We should have some definitive feedback from MAC Commissioner by the end of June.
And I think we can wait until June to get that, to get that information. Not saying that you're not gonna get it, I'm just saying, we are trying to find out. We're spending ninety thousand dollars to find out the comparable salaries in the area. And I think, what, you waited, I mean, it's been March. I would like to wait the, for the study to be completed, which is June.
Hold on a second, Madam CFO, if the study is done in June for July, then I think during our budget hearing, we discussed that looking at ways to fund it at midterm, which is in January, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it wouldn't be January until we can even think about giving the money to fund the position. And at the same time, that'll be corrupting this office, I believe.
Mr. Chair, for me, I, I, I'm gonna be honest, y'all. I, I've been praying. I do struggle. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'm gonna be honest with you, and you and I go toe-to-toe. But why do I struggle? Because coming from corporate America, I really don't see why we are going round and round on eight thousand dollars at all when it's vital to your operation. It makes no sense to me, considering the fact that we've not had anybody in the Communications Director for almost a year. And we have not had anybody in the Development Authority Director for almost a year. So it has nothing to do with money, because the money is there. The money is there. So we can, we can use certain things at the time that it's most convenient for us to use it. But I will share, as Chairman said earlier, I sat on this panel when all last year everything was passed, and not trying to be funny for certain people's offices. Now, I did ask for an approval and, and did vote along with that study simply because at some point, this board, this county has got to get to a place to where we follow policies, procedures, and we make sound decisions, not because of who we like, who we worried about, what they spending, and what they doing. This makes no sense to me. Just as my fellow commissioners told me, I don't get into the weeds of what people do every day. But when you say, how much, how much, what does that position pay for the Development Authority, uh, Madam CFO? I need the exact amount, and how many months has been vacant?
Well, let me say before she answers, though, there's two postings. Our posting is ninety, and I don't know what the Development Authority's.
Well, just with our post, because I want to stick to the nuts and bolts. How much does that position pay for our post? And nobody's been in that position for a year.
I'll have to check and see.
Madam, Dennis, get that amount for me.
I can get it if you.
Somebody give me that amount. And somebody give me the amount for how much we know these cost. We gotta stop playing games with the people's money. Get a man his eight thousand dollars. Give the solicitor her eight thousand dollars. What we tend to do, Chairman, is we come up here, move money around, move stuff around, and we got departments that are not functioning because we gave them what they wanted, because they wanted to make it look like it was a zero increase. Well, and I know I'm wrong for this, but I want to see a doggone conviction out of Superior Court by the DA's office. I go out here and we have given them everything they want, everything they want, and I'm heartbroken today. I'm heartbroken. We gonna sit up here and debate eight thousand dollars? Give you the eight thousand. Give us a list of what she need. And you know what? You can't fire me.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Online, the position is posted for ninety thousand four hundred and five dollars.
And how many months has it been vacant?
Um, Ms. Amblis will have to answer that question.
Somebody can answer it.
I can't say definitively, Commissioner. I know it's been several months that it's been open, but I can't say definitively.
It's over, it's over ten months.
It's been close to, uh, uh, a year.
That ain't even ten percent of what we save for not having them in place.
We're not gonna continue to, to, to keep down that rope, because you're speaking the truth, alright? Everything you said, I absolutely agree with, but let's address this issue right here.
Mr. Chairman, also on the Economic Development Director, that money is not coming out of general fund. That is funded out of the three percent hotel motel tax fund, and that can't be used for anything else.
It can't be what?
It can't be used for anything else outside of that economic.
Yeah, but the money's available on that pot. So it should, it should be no problem with funding it while we waiting ten, twelve months for it.
I can't respond to that.
It's a rhetorical question. So let's, let's.
Well, then, if that's the case, for the record, what about the Communications Director?
That money is in the general fund.
And how much is that sitting in the general fund that we debating less than ten percent? It's two positions that those people left a long time ago. It was fifty-two thousand dollars, I believe, was one of them. Another one was forty-seven or forty-eight.
Okay, but we are getting a little bit off track here, because we're addressing the tax commissioner's needs here. Uh, are there any other questions for his request?
I just want to say on the record, people need to take notice of decisions made at this dais. Take notice of it.
Alright, we gonna have some.
It's not a question, but I still say we wait until the study is over. That was the purpose of the study.
Alright, is there any other statements or questions?
And, and bring it back.
Hold, hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
I did not call you up here to, uh, get a comment from you, so. It has nothing that.
I need her to apologize. She just said, in front of all these people, when was the last time we got a conviction? Well, it was last week at the child molester.
Okay, madam, madam DA.
Week before that, the murder.
Madam DA. I understand, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna go back and forth like this. We're not going back and forth, madam. Madam DA, please. Alright, so let's address, let's address this. There's no other questions? Those in favor are I.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it fails. Let's move to the next. Okay, please, y'all.
Okay, what you calling?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have an orderly meeting, please. Please. Alright, ma'am.
Chairman, the last request is on behalf of the Office of the Solicitor General. We're requesting reclassification of the Senior Investigator, grade twenty-eight, step four, sixty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total compensation for that position, eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. We want to reclassify it to the Deputy Chief Investigator, grade thirty-one, step four, seventy-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Total compensation for the position is ninety-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. This request results in a budgetary impact of twelve thousand ninety-nine dollars.
Is there a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
No question, but I'd say the same thing, that this should be held until the compensation study is completed.
Madam Solicitor General, would you like to come forward and make a statement?
With all due respect, everybody, we've been waiting for.
State your name, for us.
I'm sorry, Tasha Mosley, Solicitor General. We've been waiting over a year and a half for this position. As I stated last, two weeks ago, we put in, um, through the legislative request and was told to hold to twenty nineteen, that it was gonna be on the twenty nineteen budget. This young lady has extraordinary work. Right now, she's down at Gypstick, um, in Forsyth County for this entire week, training police officers dealing with domestic violence. And we're talking about twelve. You guys know, I never zero out my budget. I am one of the few electeds and department heads that's fiscally responsible. And so when I come, I don't come, what, y'all see me once every two, three years about something, about money? And so I've got an employee that has been busting her behind throughout the state of Georgia and getting accolades for Clayton County, training our police department, training all the municipality police departments, along with my chief investigator. And to not give her this money is a slap in the face. We know about the compensation studies. I mean, they're filling out the, the things right now, we've all known, compared to our other counties, that we are lower paid, that we are one of the lowest-paid counties. And I keep losing qualified people to my surrounding counties. And I spend more money training people to get them back up to where the office needs to be so that I can prosecute and, and prosecute those individuals that need to be prosecuted. This will be somebody else that I will lose because of the Cav, because of Fulton, even a Henry County is paying more than us. And we have a bigger population size. So please do not hold it for this study, because we've held it now for over a year. For over a year. Give her what she deserves. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, well, same.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Madam Solicitor, while I respect and I appreciate you through all these years or whatever, the same thing. I would like to wait until the study is done. We are spending that large amount of money. And if we waited a year, we can wait, hopefully she can wait another thirty, thirty, sixty days.
Alright, if, if we keep on having these outbursts, we're gonna have to ask you to leave the gallery. So please, allow the Commissioners and those who are at the podium to speak. Please, a little respect go a long way. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I just do want, and I, and I, and I'm gonna apologize to people too, because if you gotta talk to them. But you gotta understand, people in Clayton County are passionate, and regardless of what we say or how we say it, the bottom line is that we got to make sure that we're doing the right thing consistently. And that's what's most frustrating, that we use something when it's convenient for us. Now, I'm gonna tell you, we vote this down, I tell you what I'm gonna do. You know I'm a researcher. I'm gonna go back and research every position that was approved while this compensation study was already on the books to go forward. And we gonna look at whose were approved and who was not, and we gonna look at who those people are. We gonna stand on the facts today. So, Madam DA, I apologize if you feel that way, but I know that on this board, we approve things for you during this compensation study. And all I'm saying is, we need to stop playing games. Do what we need to do. So my comments still stand, but to the community, I do apologize. We all get frustrated.
Any other questions, comments? Those in favor are I.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it fails.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Say it. Mr. Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, Commissioners, I have one item, which is Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-one.
Mr. Reed, before you proceed with that question, I mean, the resolution, I got a question, a procedural question for you. A reference to this, and it deals with, uh, conflict of interest, which I believe, uh, is, involves Commissioner Edmison by him serving as Vice Chair of this board and the Chairman of the Development Authority Board, where you're taking one department underneath this board's purview and moving it under the Development Authority's purview, which he chairs, and he also runs a financial services, uh, business, where I believe he has a, uh, precariorinary interest, because he's a registered investment advisor as well. So does the conflict of interest exist to the point where he needs to recuse himself from this vote?
Let me take it, the, the first part, which is sitting as Development Authority.
Let me just preface this by saying, I don't know what he plans on doing, but I'm just asking the question upfront, whether he's planning on recusing himself or not.
Alright, um, so let me, I'll, because it sounds like you're, there's two issues. The first one is, is he, um, recused, can he, has to recuse himself by virtue of sitting on, uh, the Development Authority? And, uh, there's nothing that prohibits, because he's not voting as a member of the Development Authority. He's voting as a member of the Board of Commissioners. And so that's where, that is where the issue now. If it was going to be something that was, and I can't even give an example, but if it was like, say, it was a, I don't know, I can't think of an example right now where you would have a direct conflict where the board, his decision as a member of the board is adverse to an interest of the county, then that's where you would have a actual conflict. That's what, um, conflict of interest means, that you have one person, you're holding one position which is diametrically opposed to another position. And that's where you, and you can't represent both sides fairly. That's what the conflict comes in. Now, that doesn't mean, and that's different from just having an interest, is where you have a conflict of those two interests is where there's the issue. Now, as it relates to the second issue, as to his, his, um, his day job, I don't know enough about what, uh, he does to know whether that would conflict with his ability to vote as a member of the Board of Commissioners on that issue.
But his ability to move or be a part of a vote to move Economic Development Department into a Development Authority purview, I believe goes directly to that interest.
It would be no more than, uh, if the board was going to appoint somebody to represent the Economic Development Department. I mean, I don't know, just by virtue of having a financial interest, if, again, if there was an issue that involved in a deal or something that he was working on in his individual practice, and that, and that issue came before the board, then that's where you would have the typical conflict of interest, because his duties personally, as it relates to the, uh, what he's doing outside the job, is conflicting or has a appearance of conflicting with something official position that the county has taken. I don't think there's enough-
But the peculiar interest, which deals with money, then if he's a financial investor, uh, agent, so a registered invest, investment advisor, and he's moving a department to the economic development where they bring contracts and deals in, where they tell people, I mean, in his business, he tells people how to make money, where to make money, where to invest their money. Now, this department, I already have a problem from being on the board itself, but now he's in a position, not saying that he would, to profit from that arrangement.
That would be if I was working under the MSRB rules for a market maker, which I don't. An example of that might be the 2014 Sloss-funded bonds, revenue bonds for the hospital that were underwritten by Wells Fargo. I recused myself for conflict of interest at that time, because I worked for an MSRB market maker. That would be a perfect example of what you're talking about. I no longer work for that or any other market maker.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, I got two simple things. The first thing is Webster's Dictionary of Conflict of Interest is a conflict between the private interest and the official responsibilities of a person in a position of trust. That's simple as that. The second one that I have is, based upon the Business Dictionary, um, it says, "A situation that has the potential to undermine the impartiality of a person because of the responsibility, of possibility of a clash between the person's self-interest, personal interest, or public interest." And two, has even another, uh, broader, more broader definition. Situation in which a party's responsibility to a second party limits its ability to discharge its responsibility to a third party. Based on the second one alone, he's not able to discharge his position as a board member and also being on that board. And unfortunately, the state of Georgia doesn't see anything wrong with it, and I'm gonna take it a little bit further. And thank God, I went to all those classes and graduated from ACCG, because I did speak to the folks down there, and I've spoken to all the leading, um, counties that have been making strides in the area of the, and development. And all of them agree that a Development Authority was first established simply to make it to where it was not a political entity. I will, I will quote Mr. Bob Shaw himself, who's like the Don Juan of the Development Authorities. He said, "I used to be the Republican Party Chair, but when it comes to being on the Development Authority, I got two goals, and that is to bring business and create jobs. It is not a partisan deal, it has nothing to do with the board. What we've done is create a quasi-Board of Commissioners," which I'm gonna take it a step further, which is most concerning, "as a business owner, because what we do is give them the rules of which to play by, to bring the business back to the county. Well, now I, I'm coming in and I gotta deal with your Board of Commissioners person on it?" So there are errors all the way around. And those at ACCG, also, as I consulted with folks and just asked the question, everybody states that it's the worst decision that we could make. And once again, if, if the community of Clayton County is okay with this, I always say, "You like it, I love it," because it's just wrong. I don't read the right thing, but it's just wrong.
All right, well, we're not gonna prolong the meeting, but I do have some problems with that, and I will handle myself accordingly if it should pass. Go ahead, proceed on with the resolution.
All right, so, um, I have one resolution, which is 2018 dash forty-one, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority of Clayton County for the promotion of economic development in the county, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect a rev, appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any questions?
I have-
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Edmison.
Mr. Reed, OCGA thirty-six, sixty-two, five, specifically Section A. I know you have that memorized on the tip of your tongue, right?
Of course.
Has to do with, uh, the state code regarding directors to govern, in fact, it reads, "The governing authority of a county or municipality may appoint no more than one member of the governing authority as a director." Does that relate to the Development Authority of Clayton County?
So you're asking whether that code section applies to Clayton County?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, state Georgia authorizes us to appoint any member of this board to the Development Authority.
State law applies to Clayton County.
Thank you very much.
Okay, my question is, first of all, who, who helped draft this IGA?
The, there's a draft from the Development Authority's lawyer-
Who is that attorney?
Michelle Youngblood.
Who does she?
Doesn't she work for Freeman Mathis?
She does.
Doesn't she work with y'all?
She works in our firm, yes, as I work for Freeman Mathis.
Who else drafted?
I helped draft some of it.
Okay, so this is an agreement between Clayton County, VOC, and Development Authority?
That's correct.
Who sat with y'all when you drafted it? Because I, I didn't get a call to be there, from my input. So was there a reason why the chairman of the county was deliberately left out?
The, at any time, any member who has anything that they would like to add to any item on the agenda, we are well, more than willing to sit with any, any commissioner to add any input on any agenda item at any time. If, if there's something that the chairman would like, if you would like to add or make any changes, I'll certainly add that into, uh, the agreement.
And, and I, I agree with that, and I agree wholeheartedly, but something of this nature, when you're taking a department and putting, placing it under the purview of another agency or, or authority, it never crosses anybody's mind to say, "Hey, Chairman, what do you think about this?" Or, "Get my two cents worth"? Who asked, what board member asked you to do this?
Mr. Chairman, I asked him to do this. I asked Michelle Youngblood, and I took a card from your playbook of, "Bring it to the board, put it to the board, vote it up or down." That's what you've told me a hundred times, and that's what I'm, and that's what I'm doing.
At any point, did you think to involve the chairman?
Yes, sir, and your role as chairman of this board, I'm bringing it to you for your consideration right now.
At this time, right?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, that's definitely within your purview to do this.
I just have one more question, Mr. Chair. Back during the last budgetary cycle, we need to understand what was the vote to allow for Mr. Hancock's firm to come into the county? Who led that vote? It was a three, two vote to change to, yes, it was, to, to allow for-
I just don't understand that question.
To allow for that firm to come into the county, because I voted against all of it because of that mainly. And that vote was led by a certain commissioner. So it goes back to a conflict of interest. So regardless of the code, and I know the state code does stand, but the bottom line is, it also, it does state that a conflict of interest, we must recuse ourselves. So the commissioner just stated, he acted on behalf of the board, because there was no board member available. There was no board member brought present. I don't know about a meeting that you all had to draft an IGA. I was not brought into it. So unless there was sidebar conversations that were violation of sunshine laws, then this board was not involved, because he can't wear two hats, because you just said it. You said it earlier, because of the definition of conflict of interest, he can act in that role and then come back and act in this role. But he just stated, he acted in the role of this board unless the board wasn't there at all. Who was he at the time?
Any commissioner, at any time, on any agenda item, can come to, because we are your lawyers, at any time, if you ever have anything that comes on any agenda, you can come and say, "I want to input my issue on this particular issue."
That's what our bylaws say, right? You need to go to the clerk.
And at any time-
But, hold on a second, but what you're also saying is, because all of y'all are, all of our attorneys, he can take his hat off any time and say, "I'm a commissioner at this minute, DAA Chairman the next minute." So that's a conflict in itself.
And then we gotta have ESP to know when you drafted it, because I didn't receive an invite.
Mr. Chairman, who called a question on this 40-second vote?
That was quite rude.
Yes, and we knew it was coming, but nonetheless, question's been called. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there?
Have a motion. We have a motion in a second.
All right, I stand, I stand corrected. All right, those in favor, aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes.
And I'll make an official, um, official notice that we need to contact BJ Pock. AG won't do anything about it, we will contact the U.S. Attorney General.
Uh, Madam Clerk, what speaks? All right, uh, Mr. Garber, please.
Mr. Chairman, the next six items are board appointments.
Um, Mr., um, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to let you know that we have, we would like to request that, um, executive session on litigation and real estate.
And personnel.
And personnel.
That's right. Madam Clerk, uh, appointments, okay. Now, we're gonna take the second now. All right, the first appointment is to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council, to fill a vacant seat, vacated by, uh, where am I at? Okay, so it's a vacant seat. It's a three-year term expiring on May fifteenth, 2021. Are there any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a recommendation, but the, um, I'm trying to get this email to come up. I'd like to make, make a recommendation for, uh, Ms. Jackie Edwards, who resides in Hampton, to be on that board.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Library Board to fill the expiring term of Sherry Hamilton. The term is three years expiring on June thirtieth, 2021, full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? Library Board. All right, here and now, we will-
No, I make a recommendation, um, for Ms. Jordan, if she would accept. She telling me that?
No.
Okay, well, we would draw that recommendation.
All right, are there any recommendations? All right, hold it till the next.
Yes.
Next one's also to the Library Board to fill the expiring term of Brenda Rayburn. Three-year term expiring on June thirtieth, 2021, full board appointment. Any recommendations?
Well, I would like to, um, reappoint Ms. Rayburn, if she's willing, she can't serve, okay.
I talked to her today, both she and Ms. Hamilton, they're both termed out, plus she has other things on her, I guess.
Any other, uh, recommendations? All right, here and now, we're going to the next. All right, also, Library Board, fill the expiring term of Dr. Dwayne Lynn Wiggins. Three-year term expiring on June thirtieth, 2021, full board appointment. Any recommendations? Hold that as well. Next is appointment to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board to fill the expiring term of Dr. Nia Canty. The term is three years, expiring on June thirtieth, 2021. Full board appointment, any recommendations?
I just make a recommendation, we hold him, Chair.
No, I'm, I'm gonna make a recommendation on that. Her name is Shirley Hines. Is there a second?
Oh, I second. She's good.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppo, oppose? It's unanimous. All right, the last one is appointment to the Veterans Advisory Board to fill the expiring term of Mr. Pearson McGee Jr. Term is four years, expiring on June sixth, 2022. This is a Chairman Turner's appointment. I would like to appoint E.J. Chows. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item is a zoning public hearing. The applicant is Ed Etefia. On behalf of World Peace Global Ministries, Inc., the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a place of worship. The subject property is located at twenty-nine oh one, Mount Zion Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval with a condition. This is District One, Commissioner Sona Gregory's district.
All right, is the applicant here? Please take the podium, sir. State your name.
Good evening. This is Ed Etefia, I'm the Assistant Pastor of World Peace Global Ministries in Forest Park, Georgia. We, uh, turned in our application since, uh, October of last year, and we've been going back and forth on this particular application since then. It's been about eight months now. We, um, had to leave where we were operating, because we bought land here in Clayton County, with the hope that we can go ahead and develop it. Um, we've met all the requirements that, uh, were posed to us by the, uh, the administration of Clayton County. And, uh, we are at the point now where we have no option but to seek approval so we can move forward with detailed design for construction. We, uh, we are small church. We are now running a hotel lobby, just to keep, uh, some of our members that are still remaining. Um, this has cost us tremendously in terms of hardship, and, uh, we've lost some members consequently. But, uh, we're praying that the board would, uh, help us get through this particular juncture, so we can go ahead and develop this property. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have for me at this point.
All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against the applicant's request? Anybody like to speak for or against it? Commissioner Gregory.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, um, accept the recommendation of the ZAG Board and offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Probably moved a second, those in favor, aye.
Aye. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
The ZAG Board Commissioner, um, had some conditions?
I did, I apologize, that was on my mind. Yeah, what was that condition, Ms.?
The kid, the condition is approval of CUP does not grant relief to any other development standards or requirement of the zoning ordinance.
Say that again, so, I'm sorry.
The condition is an approval of this application does not grant relief to any other development standards or requirements of the zoning ordinance.
And you have agreed to that?
Yes, sir.
All right, once again, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is there, if there is no further discussion, we do have a request to go into executive session for real estate, litigation, and personnel.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Everybody have a good night, please. Motion to reconvene.
Submit.
Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Chuck?
Would you like me to take them all together?
Yes, please.
All right, uh, the first-
Now, wait a minute, what, are we, are we doing something? No, okay. All right, take them together.
Okay, the first is a settlement agreement, um, with Randall Brown, relating to an accident that occurred on or around November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, at the southbound exit ramp on South Interstate six seventy-five at Georgia one thirty-eight, in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Uh, the next is a settlement agreement with Olivia Scott, relating to an accident that occurred on or around November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, on near the exit, the exit ramp, the southbound exit ramp at Interstate six seventy-five in Georgia one thirty-eight, in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and forty cents. And the last is a, uh, request approval to enter into a lease agreement with Brothers Properties Phoenix LLC for, for, uh, the county's health department, and it's specifically relating to, uh, Suites four fifty and four ninety-nine. And this is, will be for a, um, thirteen, well, it'll be a thirteen-month lease- it'll be a thirteen-month lease. First month is for free, and the next, um, will be from, the effective date will start on Ju, June third, June first, and expire June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. May I?
May I approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
Submit.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.